As a parent and grandparent myself, my heart and my support are with the Treywick family. No parent wants to outlive their children. While any premature death of a child is tragic, it is particularly traumatic when a child loses their life to violence, especially at the hands of those who are supposed to protect us. As co-chair of the Black Latino and Asian Caucus in 2019, I supported the Treywick's fight for accountability. And as speaker, I've continued to support their demand for accountability because it is critical for this family, our city, and public safety. This week, a disciplinary trial began to examine some of the misconduct charges against the two officers for their actions that resulted in Kowalski's death. Ellen and Ricky Treywick have been here every day of this trial, flying in from Georgia, where they live and where they work. No family should have to wait four years and be forced to fight for some semblance of accountability for the killing of their loved one. On top of that, there have been multiple efforts to obstruct it, with the latest being the NYPD trial judge to unilaterally throw out an important disciplinary charge against the officers. But this was already substantiated by the CCRB, our civilian oversight board for police misconduct. I expressed my opposition to this action, which is both unacceptable and legally questionable by potentially violating the NYPD's memorandum of understanding with the CCRB. Once again, as a parent and a grandparent, raising children in this country, this is our worst nightmare. And yet, too often, it's a reality. It pains me to hear the stories time and time again of black parents losing their children at the hands of police violence. I think about my own children, my own grandchildren. Just as they should be safe in their homes, Kowalski too should have been safe in his. The fact that he is not is both saddening and enraging. Ellen and Ricky, I want to thank you for being here and for your courage. I know it's not easy. And I want to apologize on behalf of this council for all you've been through in having to fight for basic accountability. When police officers or anyone bestowed with the public's trust commit acts of misconduct, they must be held accountable. I've been troubled by the repeated efforts of late to subvert civilian oversight for discipline in police misconduct cases, of which there are too many to even list. In the case of the officers who killed Kowalski, the CCRB has substantiated disciplinary charges against officers and recommended that they both be fired. I encourage all of the reporters in this room to speak freely with Ellen and with Ricky following this press conference and hear firsthand from them about what they've been put through related to the killing of their son and in seeking basic accountability for it. As speaker and as a council, we support you in your pursuit of accountability for Kowalski's death. And we recognize the continued pain and trauma that you've been forced to endure as a result. And we thank you again for being here today. Yesterday, the mayor released his fiscal 2024 executive budget. The council has been pretty clear that our priority is ensuring that the budget delivers investments in the essential services that New Yorkers need to recover and succeed in our city. While there were some adjustments to the most recent peg proposed by the administration, the executive budget still includes another peg totaling $1.6 billion in proposed cuts and maintains all other previously enacted and proposed pegs that total more than $4 billion over fiscal year '23 and '24. Our libraries, CUNY, and other essential agencies and services that New Yorkers rely on are still facing significant cuts that are harmful. Chronic understaffing and inadequate resources at city agencies have already made it difficult for them to fulfill their obligations to deliver critical services and programs. As a result, New Yorkers are not getting the help they need, whether it's food assistance, housing vouchers, or other important services. New Yorkers, and especially our working families, are already stretched thin as they face a crisis of affordability in this city. As a government, it is our responsibility to deliver, and we cannot afford to fail them at this critical time. New Yorkers need smart investments in key services that will set them and our city up for success. For example, earlier this year, this week, I was joined by Mental Health Committee Chair Linda Lee, Majority Leader Keith Powers, Councilmember Eric Botcher, and mental health advocates and service providers to release our mental health roadmap. This detailed plan that focuses on strengthening our mental health care infrastructure and services with evidence-based solutions contains the type of investment that the city must prioritize. We're facing a mental health crisis, and if we do not take meaningful steps to meet this need, our city will fall short for New Yorkers. This is not just one example when we talk about essential services that we must prioritize for investment, and the council is fighting to deliver. As we continue to negotiate the city budget, we will be guided by these priorities to invest in the people of our city and their needs. Now, let's move on to the stated agenda. First, we will vote on the following finance items: A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget; A pre-considered resolution to authorize Article 11 exemption for one building in Washington Heights in Councilmember Abreu's district; Five pre-considered resolutions to authorize one new Article 11 exemption and amend four prior Article 11 exemptions for four buildings in East Harlem and Deputy Speaker Ayala's district; A pre-considered resolution to authorize Article 11 exemption for one building in West Harlem in Councilmember Richardson-Jordan's district; and a pre-considered resolution to authorize an Article 11 exemption for one building in the Upper West Side in Councilmember Brewer's district. Next, we'll vote on the following land use items: 24-56 Far Rockaway Boulevard rezoning will facilitate the construction of a new mixed-use building and approximately 26 housing units. The council is modifying the application to change the proposed R6B district to an R5D district and remove an existing school from the rezoning area to better reflect the surrounding community character. The council is voting on a motion to file the text amendment, which was withdrawn by the applicant in Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers district; 246-06 South Cantuade Avenue commercial overlay, an application to bring an existing tire shop into conformance with zoning also in Majority Whip's, Whip, Brewer's, Brooks-Powers district. That's a mouthful, Silvina. Next, we will vote on the following pieces of legislation: Resolution 487, sponsored by Councilmember Ina Vernikoff, would recognize April 29th as End You Hatred Day annually in the city of New York. Resolution 460, sponsored by Councilmember Amanda Farias, would call on the state legislature and the governor to fully fund the MTA in the 2024 budget so that rioters have effective, affordable, and frequent public transportation and to ensure the MTA maintains fiscal stability. Next, we will vote on a package of bills aimed at improving government efficiency and eliminating outdated entities. Resolution 566, sponsored by our Governmental Operations Chair, Councilmember Sandra Ung, approves the report and Advisory Board Review Commission's determination recommending the waiver of eight reporting requirements that was communicated to the city council on January 24th, 2023. Introduction 1004A, sponsored by Councilmember Nantasha Williams, would repeal certain reporting requirements selected for waiver by the commission and amend certain outdated and unnecessary reports and studies. I invite, is she here? She's not here yet, okay. Introduction 984A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would repeal certain outdated and unnecessary provisions, temporary programs, and pilot programs, and unconstitutional provisions from the Administrative Code of the city of New York. And I thank Councilmember Brewer for her leadership on this bill. And Introduction 986A, sponsored by Councilmember Amanda Farias, would repeal certain outdated and unnecessary advisory boards, task forces, and commissions from both the city charter and the administrative code. I invite Councilmember Farias to the podium to speak about her legislation.
Thank you, Speaker. Today, I'm excited to see two bills of mine that prioritize the efficiency of our city government being voted on today. The first, Resolution 460, which calls on Governor Hochul to fully fund the MTA and make six-minute service a reality. This is something all New Yorkers need right now. And while we still have time to make lifesaving choices for New Yorkers, this council is demanding it be included in our state budget. The second, Introduction 986A, the omnibus repeal bill focuses on amending and repealing more than 15 nonessential task forces, advisory boards, and commissions. This bill is a part of a larger package with my colleagues Councilmembers Sandra Ung, Gail Brewer, and Nantasha Williams. We, as a council body with the leadership of Speaker Adams, are taking the initiative to do some very necessary spring cleaning. It's long overdue to remove items that are outdated and no longer serving a purpose. Removing completed task forces, no longer serp, sorry, removing completed task forces, duplicate efforts by agencies, rules that are already commonplace, and expired commissions definitely need to go to ensure efficiency in our admin code and our city charter. Thank you to Speaker Adams for your leadership on this, the council's legislative division, and thank you to Councilmembers Ung, Brewer, and Williams for your collaboration on this important legislative package.
Thank you, Councilmember Farias. Next, Introduction 891A, sponsored by Councilmember Rafael Salamanca, would allow gaming for charitable purposes at professional sporting venues. This bill would authorize sports venues to conduct raffles during professional and collegiate sporting competitions from two hours before the beginning of play until the end of play. Venues like Yankee Stadium and City Field would be able to host gaming when operated by an authorized charitable organization. I invite Councilmember Salamanca to come forward and speak about his legislation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to speak on Intro 891. Across the country, professional sports teams are raising incredible sums of money for local charities through games that are completely separate from the action on the field. The game and 50/50 fan raffles. The very rare exception, however, is teams who play in New York City sports venues, who as a result of an antiquated section of New York City Charter are prohibited from hosting games of chance at stadiums and arenas. For those of you that don't know, 50/50 raffles are a staple of stadium fans' experiences that have been around for decades. Teams sell numbered raffle tickets before and during games before announcing the winning ticket near the end of the game. While 50% of the proceeds go to winning fans, the other 50% goes to a far more meaningful purpose, a local charity of the team's choice. With Intro 891, we are bringing the city in line with what is already allowed at sports venues across New York State and virtually every other state in our country, all the while paving the way for sports teams to raise hundreds of thousands of dollars for charities each season. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salamanca. Next, Introduction 198, sponsored by our public advocate Jomani Williams, would require the Department of Homeless Services to create a bill of rights that inform individuals experiencing homelessness of the rights and services available to them. DHS would have to make this information publicly available on its website, in shelters, and in social service offices. Oh, there he is. I invite our number-one Nick fan next to me, our public advocate Jomani Williams, to speak about his legislation. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. At first, I just want to say greetings to the Treywick family and align myself with every single word that you said. And while I'm not surprised that you are again in the forefront of leadership, I just want to say thank you. We're, uh, thank you to the Speaker for allowing me to speak and support this bill and the Chair of Majority Whip, sorry, the Chair Ayala, for her support. We're in a moment when the housing and homelessness crisis is deepening, both for the people seeking asylum here and the 50,000 people who are here in our shelters before they arrive. I want to be clear that the homelessness and housing crisis has been a crisis before our, before our aspiring New Yorkers came. And had it been dealt with then, this wouldn't be exacerbated right now, which is what is happening. Homeless individuals are being targeted, demonized, and dehumanized inside and outside of shelters. Unhoused people feel like they're left without support, without options, without rights of recourse or recourse amid a system that has failed for so long and has left people feeling abandoned and powerless. Instead of centering the need to provide safe, supportive, deeply affordable, income-targeted housing, unhoused people are being treated as a nuisance, as sometimes to be ignored or even removed. This bill establishes and codifies a statement of rights, a statement defining the rights of homeless individuals within and outside of our shelter system. Those rights include shelter, access to legal services, request of an interpreter and have documents translated when interacting with city agencies, educational options for children experiencing homelessness, voting rights, voter registration and how to find polling places, information on how to file a complaint, and protection against retaliation for filing complaints, protections against discrimination, and the right to remain outside. It also details the rights of individuals in shelters. As we work to get people into permanent affordable and income-targeted housing, we need to codify the rights of homeless individuals into law to clearly state and make them known, to ensure that they are upheld and that people are empowered to demand what they deserve. While these standards are present in agency rules and other city agencies and guidances, the legislation synthesizes them into a single declaration. Aggregating, codifying, distributing, and publicizing these rights will help to ensure they are upheld and empower homeless individuals and New Yorkers to self-advocate if these rights are violated. Thank you again to the Speaker, to the Chair, and to the body.
Thank you, public advocate. I didn't wear my orange today, only because, anyway. I did wear, I did wear my blue. Got it? All right. Introduction 704A, sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Abreu, would provide landlords with the option to receive rental assistance payments, like CityFEPs, via an electronic transfer to their bank accounts. I invite Councilmember Abreu to come to the podium and speak about his bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Imagine you did nothing wrong, you worked hard to make ends meet and maintain your obligations, and you still find yourself in housing court defending yourself against an eviction notice. This is not some hypothetical scenario. This is night, this nightmare is a living, breathing reality for thousands of tenants who failed to receive their rental assistance payments from the city. The bill the council will pass today automates rental assistance checks from the HRA, addressing this crisis head-on. The city is now mandated by law, or will be mandated by law at the end of this stated, to allow landlords to opt-in into an instant electronic delivery of rental assistance benefits with an online record of receipts that is clear as day. It's incredible that it's taking us this long for the city to provide electronic payments directly to landlords. This helps out tenants, it helps out landlords, it helps the city save money on our rental, on our shelter system, alleviating the shelter system. And as we heard in our hearing on this bill, rental assistance checks have been sent to the wrong addresses on multiple occasions, putting our tenants at risk of displacement solely due to government inefficiencies. These missed or delayed payments are preventable errors that are dire consequences for families receiving housing assistance. I am thrilled that we are taking action to keep tenants where they belong safely in their homes. Thank you again, Madam Speaker, Speaker Ayala, Deputy Speaker Ayala, and my colleagues for the support. I look forward to today's passage.
Ooh, you got applause from your colleagues. I heard murmurings that someone, a veteran colleague, whose name I won't mention, wished that it was his bill. It's so good. It's a good one. Next, Introduction 273B, sponsored by Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse, would require NYPD officers to be trained to recognize and respond to individuals with autism spectrum disorder. The training would be incorporated as part of a new recruits academy process, and all uniformed members would receive the training on a biennial basis. I invite Councilmember Narcisse to come to the podium and speak about her bill.
Thank you. First, I want to say sorry for what's going on in your life. It's difficult as a mom and a nurse for over three decades. It's difficult, and we need to do better. When we lead with kindness and compassion, our city moves in the right direction. Today, with the passage of Intro 273B, we are doing just that. There are more than 300,000 New Yorkers on the autism spectrum, and the number of New Yorkers with ASD is on the rise. This increase will ultimately lead to more interaction between NYPD and New Yorkers with ASD. New Yorkers with ASD have unique needs, and at times, their behavior and mannerism can be misinterpreted by police officers as an act of aggression. This bill will fully train our police officers, all the force, on how to best approach and engage with people on the autism spectrum. This will lead to safer outcomes for all parties involved. An interaction with police for a person with autism spectrum disorder can be severely traumatizing and unfortunately, at times, inevitable. While I wish trained medical professionals could be on the scene as first responders to all the calls involve people with ASD or mental health issues, but unfortunately, it's not happening today. Until we increase funding for those services, and the NYPD will continue to be the primary first responders. It is unfortunate. To that point, we must adequately change officers and train officers to increase their recognition of autistic behaviors and help avoid misinterpretation and escalation. I thank you, Madam Speaker. This is very dear to my heart. Recently, they called me, her parents called me in New Jersey. Her child was took to the police, um, to the precinct because he had a phone, and they're trying to get the phone because they assumed that he took a picture of someone, a young lady at the ring. So, this bill, and the mother called me and said for me to encourage, to go in Jersey and encourage my colleagues. So, Madam Speaker, again, thank you. And all my colleagues who supported this measure, including Councilwoman Kamela Hanks, Councilmember Darlene Mealy, I thank you. And the Chair of the Committee, of course, Hanks, the Public Safety. The NYPD and all the advocates who helped me for this bill to get this, I mean, to this place today. I thank you all. So, let's do it, New York. We can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. That one gets to my heart as well. Finally, we will be voting on a package of critical street safety bills. While traffic fatalities have fallen sharply over recent decades, the overall increase in traffic violence since 2018 has been concerning, particularly the increase of children killed on our streets. This year alone, we've already lost 41 people to traffic-related fatalities, which are preventable tragedies. Behind every crash is a family and a community impacted by this violence, and it's important that the council advance equitable policies like the legislation we're voting on today to ensure that all New Yorkers can live, work, and commute on our safer streets. Introduction 805A, sponsored by public advocate Jomani Williams, would accelerate and modify the study and reporting of traffic violence incidents as required by local law. It will require the comprehensive study that DOT is required to conduct after all traffic crashes involving a pedestrian fatality or serious injury take place every four years instead of every five years. DOT will now be required to submit the study to every community board. In addition, the legislation will require that the reports that DOT produces every three months on serious vehicular crashes now be submitted to the Speaker and all community boards as well. And once again, I invite public advocate Williams to come back to the podium to discuss this important piece of legislation.
Thank you so much again, Madam Speaker. And thank you to Majority Whip and Chair of the Committee, Councilmember Brooks-Powers. For years, traffic violence has been dubbed a solid epidemic. In 2022, 255 people died from traffic crashes, and our city has not seen this figure go below 200 for years. Every person who was a part of these numbers would be alive today and should be alive today. Traffic deaths are preventable, 100% preventable. It's my hope that the bills being voted on today will be part of that prevention, including mine. My bill will require the Department of Transportation, or DOT, to expedite studies of traffic crashes involving pedestrian fatalities or serious injuries every four years and increase from the current requirement of a prior assessment. DOT would also analyze the conditions and factors behind each crash and develop strategies to improve pedestrian safety. The bill would also require DOT to make publicly available inspections, inspection reports of locations that have encountered four or more crashes involving death or serious injury. The legislation would increase transparency, aid collaboration, and help prevent traffic violence. It's important to be clear that these bills represent a foundation, definitely not a finish line. The tragic, this tragic amount of traffic deaths isn't going to slow down unless we do. So, we have to make sure that we continue to support laws in the state as well that help us do that. So much of the budget negotiations have been dominated by a so-called focus on public safety, but it ignores things like street safety, where we have solutions proven to save lives. And I always try to talk about this along with gun violence because they are the things that are most preventable, and it makes it so hard that we are still allowing people to die because of them. Thank you.
Thank you, public advocate. Introduction 679A, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, would require the installation of traffic calming devices to safely slow or reduce traffic in senior pedestrian zones, which are areas that DOT, in consultation with DIFTA, have determined to be especially dangerous for senior pedestrians. Each year, the Department of Transportation will evaluate each senior pedestrian zone for the installation of traffic calming devices and install at least one in each senior pedestrian zone, and at least 50 across all senior pedestrian zones. I invite Councilmember Joseph to come to the podium and speak about this bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The family of Treywick, we stand with you, and our condolences are with you as you navigate the system. Good afternoon, everyone. As you're aware, our community is a home to a large number of seniors who rely on our streets and sidewalks to get around safely and comfortably. Unfortunately, we have seen an increase in accidents involving senior pedestrians, many of which are caused by speeding drivers, reckless drivers on the road. This is a matter of great concern, and it is our duty as this council to take action to protect our most vulnerable residents. That's why it's important for this bill to call on the DOT to install calming traffic devices in senior pedestrian zones throughout our communities. By installing these devices in areas where senior citizens are more likely to be walking, we can ensure they can move about our community with greater ease and confidence. These devices will also encourage drivers to slow down and pay closer attention to roads, which will help to reduce the number of incidents, accidents, and injuries in our community. In addition to installing calming devices, traffic is a cost-effective solution, as our public advocates have said. These are so much preventable measures that can be implemented quickly. We make our streets safer for everyone, especially our seniors, as I have a mom who's senior who had me late in life. So, I look out for her and all of the seniors in our city, especially for our seniors. Together, we can make our community safer and more welcoming for all of our residents. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Majority Whip, thank you so much for this. This is amazing. Traffic violence have hit my district very hard. And most, every year, I stand at a podium, I call out the names of my students who have lost to traffic violence. Other than supporting our young people, this is time that we support our seniors in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joseph. Finally, Introduction 854A, sponsored by Transportation and Infrastructure Committee Chair, Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers, would require DOT to implement daylighting at no less than 100 intersections per year, beginning in 2025. Daylighting prevents vehicles from occupying certain areas near an intersection as a way to expand sightlines for approaching motorists and all road users. DOT will also be required, whenever certain criteria are met, to install daylighting barriers such as bollards, bike racks, and other physical, physical infrastructure to prevent vehicles from occupying those areas which have undergone daylighting. I now call on our Majority Whip, Brooks-Powers, to come forward and discuss her major legislation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And today, I'm so excited to stand with my
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and today I'm so excited to stand with my colleagues on the council to celebrate the passage of a package of legislation to improve street safety. Every year, far too many New Yorkers are victimized by preventable traffic violence. Last year, 255 lives were lost to traffic violence, including 16 young children. Last year was the deadliest year on our roads for children since 2014. The council is committed to improving street safety infrastructure and enforcement citywide and help realize Vision Zero in New York City. Today, the council will pass introduction 854A, which I introduce in conjunction with Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine. This bill will require the Department of Transportation to daylight more than 100 intersections a year across the city, as well as study the benefits of daylighting for public safety. Daylighting is a proven safety measure that expands sightlines at intersections where traffic violence often takes place. Daylighting increases visibility to oncoming traffic and reduces danger for pedestrians and driver alike at these intersections. I believe daylighting, especially when implemented with physical features, can prevent injuries and deaths in New York, and I am proud to see this legislation pass today. These bills are part of a long-term project of this council to improve street safety. We will continue to pass legislation, hold the Department of Transportation accountable, and demand equitable street safety infrastructure in neighborhoods throughout the city. I thank Speaker Adams and my colleagues for their partnership, and of course, the Speaker for her leadership, especially on this crucial issue, and I look forward to seeing these bills become law. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Majority Whip. That concludes our stated agenda, and with that, we will take on-topic questions first. The bills. Really? Good bills.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You can, thank you.
You gonna stay till?
Thank you.
We got your back. We got your back.
All right. Joe? Yes, sir. Good.
A question just about your budget comments. Do you budget the mayor released yesterday with ballots? So, I'm wondering where you think the money should come from to fund some of the things that are left in the deficit?
Well, um, you mentioned a balance budget. We're going to be negotiating with the mayor around those essential services that we see are in dire need for the people in the city of New York. We are going to talk a lot about the pegs that are existing that are devastating to a lot of different spaces, particularly to the agencies that deliver the critical services that we need and are certainly not functioning at a level that they need to function at. And you know this, it's because they lack staffing right now. So many holes are there adequate support, and we can't afford to continue with the cuts. So, we are going to negotiate around those issues, and we believe that we will be negotiating in good faith, and we'll see where we end up over the next month and a half or so.
Just to follow, um, the Citizens Budget Commission came out with a report saying that most of the pegs that have been, most of the elements of the pegs that have been instituted by the mayor, they actually don't impact services. It's more things like debt refinancing, or they just happen to not spend all the money they budgeted for some, at least no reports that are such that. Are you arguing that these elements should be restored as well? Do you want the whole peg gone, or do you draw distinction between stuff that's service-related and stuff that's really just kind of like happenstance?
Yeah, you know, well, again, um, we are responding in our negotiations, or will be responding to the pegs overall. Um, we're going to take a look at, once again, in the spaces where the administration says that the peg was one thing and maybe something else. We're going to get to the bottom of that as well in the negotiation. So, it's not necessarily the fact that we dispute where these, where these pegs are taken from. What we're going to be working with, though, will be the deficit caused by the pegs that are in place. So, all of those things will be determined over the next few weeks in our negotiations. Thank you, Joe.
Good afternoon, Speaker. In terms of the Treywick family, they're called for accountability. What specifically does that look like for you in terms of the ongoing and ongoing discipline of trial?
Well, first of all, the CCRB must be respected as the oversight body for the city, and when it comes to the NYPD, and, you know, that has been in question for a very long time. The Oversight Board has recommended certain items, and we as a body do support and respect the CCRB's role in its work, and it really should never be undermined and disregarded in its efforts to ensure accountability for misconduct. We are representing all New Yorkers, no matter who they are, no matter where they work, and that's why I do support the Treywick family. I support the CCRB's role within our government, and we do call for accountability.
So, does that mean then you want to see the charges against the officer substantiated ultimately at the end of the trial?
We want the trial to go forward, and we want the system to play out. We want the CCRB's recommendations to be respected.
Madam Speaker, I know you call for accountability from, for both the officers, the police commissioner, but also the mayor, and I know he speaks often about public safety. Have you spoken with him about this particular case, especially when it comes to dispossessing the officers and, you know, a New Yorker who some would say was not kept safe within New York City?
I have not spoken with the mayor about this. Again, I wanted the role of the CCRB to be respected with that regard. So, again, I am looking for the CCRB to have done its due diligence, and I respect the recommendation of the CCRB.
Would you, I mean, if you have the opportunity to speak about this with him, I know we're in the midst of a lot of talks about it. I don't know what people say to the mayor in terms of, um, you know, have a conversation about this?
Well, you know, as I said in my opening remarks, I would reiterate the same thing that I said, you know, to this group today in my opening remarks. All of my sentiment regarding the Treywick family, regarding my involvement in past session, when the Black, Latina, and Asian Caucus sent the very first letter supporting this family to the prior administration. Here we are four years later, dealing with this tragedy and looking for accountability for this family. So, that would be the substance of my conversation.
Speaker, I don't know if you've heard the mayor's comments yesterday about NYPD overtime spending. He was saying that it shouldn't be a big concern. So, I just want to ask you if you think that the NYPD overtime budget is a particular concern, maybe more than other agencies? And if you think that the spending, or I guess the budget allocation this year should be the same as last year, or if you think there should be adjustments?
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff. Jeff, the NYPD consistently blows past its budgeted amount for overtime costs in the hundreds of millions in a way that no other city agency does. We care about responsible budgeting and the fiscal health of our city, and allowing an agency's overtime spending to routinely go beyond its budgeted amount year after year is not responsible budgeting. Our budgets should aim to reflect our spending, and the numbers and proportions of other agencies are not even close or comparable.
Madam Speaker, so the revenue projection that the mayor's office put out ended up not being too far below what the council, you know, put out in its budget response, and you highlighted that in your statement. Why do you think there's such like different conclusions about, you know, the resources that are available? What could be done with that?
I actually read an article this week about why that is by a certain, uh, organization or media. You know, I, I am so proud to have some of the brightest minds working in our finance division, and their track record really does speak for itself. I've said many times from this podium that, you know, our finance division, hands down, we put them against anybody. So, we take a look at the numbers. The council's projections have been closer than OMB's to the city's actual tax revenue in almost every year since fiscal year 14. The fact is that we're not over-projecting our tax revenue estimates, as some have accused us of doing, but, you know, we're really, really glad to see the executive budget reflect that our projection was accurate and that there are resources to invest in New Yorkers and the essential services they need, as well as plan for potential risks. I just think that traditionally, there has been a way to look at the budget from one side of City Hall compared to the way that the budget is looked at on this side of City Hall.
Speaker Adams, um, thinking about, I guess, approaching administration, uh, in negoti, I mean, are there any specific areas of the, of the budget that you guys feel like, um, any, any specific departments or, or agencies that you feel like need to be, um, restored? And I guess how do you plan to approach that in, in your negotiations, given the mayor's ruling area and that you think, um, that there's essentially a change?
Yeah, thank you. Well, you know, that is the nature of negotiations, is to talk about it and to hopefully come to consensus as best we can. There are various administrations right now that are hurting, that have been hurting for a long time, and because of the pegs that have been implemented will continue to bleed out and cause a lot of harm to New Yorkers in need. And, you know, I mean, we're still coming out of a pandemic. We've been facing very, very serious issues when it comes to our fiscal responsibility. But it's, again, as far as agencies are concerned, we can go anywhere from DHS to HPD and beyond, and we can speak with any number of workers, as we have in our oversight hearings, to get their take on it as well. And many agencies agree that the work that they do is not sustainable in, in, in its current fashion, and if we support this type of a budget that continues to take away from essential services, um, that is certainly not going to be to the benefit of the people that we are sworn to serve. Hi, Kelly.
Follow-up to that question. What specific areas do you do agree with the mayor on when it comes to his budget? And in your talks yesterday with him, did he seem open to negotiations to restoring any of the budget that you see to be prioritized?
Thanks for the question. We didn't speak about that specifically because that would open up negotiations, and we're not there yet, per se. There are, you know, there are always areas that we agree in. You know, we, I guess the top issue that we agree with would have to do with the issue that New York needs help, substantial help from our state and federal partners when it comes to funding for asylum seekers and the work that we have around the influx of asylum seekers, albeit a condition that we were in prior to the influx and the high numbers of asylum seekers. We were, quite frankly, in a very, very bad place for housing for New Yorkers. Since then, um, this has become a crisis for New York, and I wholeheartedly agree with the mayor, with the administration, that our federal partners must be that. They must be partners with New York. New York happily is a sanctuary city. But the way that this has been handled, pretty much in absentia, as far as the federal government is concerned and our federal partners, that has to change, and on that, we are definitely aligned. Thanks, Kelly. Thanks, everybody.
Speaker, are you going to the Met Gala on Monday?
That's good. Let's go Met.